Whenever you are, sir.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning on this morning. We don't even need a watershed on a day like no water's going anywhere today. So take the winter off. All right. Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to make some comments at the microphone on an item not on the agenda? We talk about a big tree today? Okay, seeing none, the agenda review and adoption would need a motion.
Mr. Chair, approve the agenda.
We got a motion by Commissioner Lynch and a second by Commissioner Fahey to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. The minutes from February 4th, 2025 meeting.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion by Uterman and a second by Lynch to approve the February 4th, 2025 minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Community announcements, my favorite part of the meeting.
Mr. Chair, if I could, you've mentioned that it's very cold. Most of the schools are closed today. It's brutally cold. But on the other hand, it's kind of like life. You're always gonna have a couple parts in life where it's gonna be really not very good. But on the other hand, by Sunday, it's gonna be 39. And you're gonna be see people walking around in t-shirts. So we gotta go take the bad and to get the good. I'd like to, one of the good is that a sports update that the Watertown Mayor Lutheran Wrestling Team is now in state. They're ranked number one. And I'd like to congratulate again. I know you're a huge Gophers fan. Max McAnally from Waconia just finished the season undefeated to go along with the heavyweight Gable Stevenson, who's again tech fault everyone or pinned everyone he's wrestled. So it's a lot of fun. But anyway, just everyone be safe and get through these next few days and it's gonna be much improved. So, thank you, sir.
You made me remind myself that I was gonna boycott the Olympics some years ago when they were going to get rid of Roman Greco wrestling from the Olympics, which I believe would have been one of the original Olympic events. And so because of that threat, we still have it in the Olympics. So, thank you. Commissioner Fahey?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yesterday, I was out at Central High School in Nor Young, America for the Carver County Dairy Beef Expo. Just great programs and the various vendors, very interesting topics, and sat in a couple of the work sessions with the informed speakers. Just wanted to put a thank you out there to the Carver County U of M Extension Office. Job well done. And just really thank you for the invite. And then also on our agenda item 3.2 today, mosquito control. I don't see Alex here yet. Maybe he's on his way, but Alex and I will also be presenting at the city of Carver tonight at 5:30 to talk more about mosquitoes when it's 17 below. And then last Thursday, spent the day at the Capitol with the Transportation Alliance and the Southwest Transportation Alliance. We heard from Governor Walz. And also our Carver County contingent met then with Rep. Nash and Rep. Ream and also Rep. Harder. Excuse me, it was a very successful day. That's all I have, sir.
Excellent. Commissioner Uterman?
Mr. Chair, I know we go to a lot of meetings, do a lot of stuff. Some of them are more high impact than others. I do the 5K every Saturday, hopefully down at the courthouse. And a guy was wearing a t-shirt, a big ripped guy and a big American flag behind him. And he looked a little like you, Tom, maybe a little bigger. Anyway, I inquired, I said, what's the shirt about? And he says, actually, we lost my son four years ago. He was a mental health employee, worked with the county on auxiliary service north of here. And he was self-medicating. And he lost his life four years ago. And so he was there to honor him. And so we got into some of the conversation. I know we all have conversations like this as board members that touch you. And I said, how can we keep his memory alive? He says, please say something about him and talk about it. And I think that when we were talking, he found out my role with the board and he says, you have obligation to do something. He said, your employees that have been navigated COVID and all the things that go along with it, that have navigated increased cases of mental illness and mental health, you need to do something in front of the board. And I said, the one token thing I can do in the short term is mention it. And so he says, I'd really like that. His name was Shane Potter. He was nicknamed the sheriff and Thor. And he gave it his all. And I just, it was just a moment for me to stop and understand a little bit more fully what our staff does on a daily basis, what they may be up against and appreciate the work that they're doing. So I wanted to make that mention publicly. On other news, we, some of us had a chance to be at the leaders meeting last week. It's where county and city and school district comes together. Myself, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Workman, we're all there. Afterwards, gave us a tour of the facility that had been updated. I think the first major update since it was built in 1975-ish. And they have a little area there. It was about techs and tech and trade. And so I had a chance to understand, you know, with budget cuts looming for the district, this seems to be an area where they always cut or have to cut. But to see the kids engaged and the teachers engaged, it also complements our program that we're doing here. It's off the ground now, Trades 360. And my understanding is 45 kids are signed up, 30 of them from our own district, to build camper cabins, learn 16 different trades within 16 weeks and have an output. So proud of the work that's being done there. It's great to see it in partnership with the school districts. Next Tuesday, Greater MSP has invited us all, if we want to join, a program they're calling Next 25. This is focused on the future of our region for the next 25 years. It's held at the Guthrie. If you haven't gotten the invite or don't have access to it, let me know if you want to go and we'll get you signed up. I plan to be there. Legislative priorities, Commissioner Fahey had mentioned activity at the Capitol. It's been tough. A lot of things going on at the federal level and the state level. We're trying to keep apprised of that. And so weekly, we're in conversations with our lobbyists. And we plan to have conversations, particularly with some of the lawmakers that are the rubber, the rubber vote, if you will. There is where we can have impact that are nonpartisan to get things done. Had a chance to sit on my first extension meeting. I was wowed at what they do. I thought they were smaller than what they are. And the breadth of what they do is pretty impressive and expansive. And one of the key topics was about eggs and alternatives to eggs. And of course, it's a hot topic any election year. Can you have chickens in your backyard or can't you? And so it was pretty interesting. A lot of talented people at that table. A couple more things. Had a chance to attend the annual Guardian Angels Famous Beef and Sausage Dinner. I know Commissioner Workman was there, a couple of past commissioners, munch community leaders, a bunch of other folks enjoyed it. It was a cool day. The gal that her family was responsible for the original recipe was there, which that was cool. But the conversation I had there that was, that was most interesting to me was the Hess family. The Hess family has been farming in Carver County for over 50 years. They've had cows on their property until last Monday for 50 years. In fact, it was the first place I ever got a chance to milk a cow. We brought out some media. They took pictures. The whole family was there, got to capture the moment. But the tenderness of the conversation of Don saying, you know, we've been in this business for 50 years, but farming has changed so much. And it was almost that he was, he was proud of it, but knew that the passage of time has happened, that gone are the days, that, you know, farming is your primary source of income. Commissioner Fahey has come on many, many times about how these farming community has shrunk in size, numbers, if you will. And I think the gentle sentiment of Don and his family where it's kind of time to maximize the value of our land and see what the future holds. And so, so those are the conversations that are going on. Two more things, sports, kids competing in state basketball on behalf of Chaska basketball this weekend. But it also gives us the opportunity to go to a lot of different communities. This past weekend, it was in Blaine, to see the growth of that community. I mean, brand new buildings, brand new roads. And it's not surprising the reinvestment of that tax revenue into their schools with updates to some of their middle schools and high schools and expansion. And so keeping my eye on that and a lot of things to go with it. And then finally, I had a chance to participate in Hooked on Books. It's another community favorite that library participates with community add in the district to bring authors and a whole bunch of STEM-related interactions. And the kids did not want to go because it was cold and they wanted to sleep in. They went and they did not want to leave. And then when we left, because we had to be at a different apartment, they were begging to go back. And so our family will be part of that. I think it's four years in a row that we've been going to that. And I think it's just a great program to bring the community together in the winter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
All right. Thank you, Chair Workman. So as a new employee of Carver County, I had an opportunity to attend New Employee Orientation, which is kicked off by our very own Administrator Hemsey, who does such a nice job with that. So I appreciated the opportunity to participate in that as other employees and kind of see, see what's going on and see that view of it. So I appreciated that. I also had a VIP tour of the Historical Society. I've never felt so important. But I got a personal tour of what happens in Waconia as, as well as the Peterson Farm. So that was good, good work being done there and preserving our history. I appreciated that. And I also got a tour of the First Street Center in Waconia as the newest member of the Mental Health Advisory Committee. And, you know, to Commissioner Uterman's point about mental health, we do a lot of good work at, at the First Street Center, helping the residents of Carver County with, with mental health issues. So impressed with that. And on Saturday, I went out to Baylor Park. They're having their Luminary Walk. They did that this Saturday. And again, on the 22nd, it was originally planned to be a cross-country ski thing. It's a, it's a walk now. But they have more than just that. They had beautiful fire pits set up and you can roast marshmallows and color. And, and I colored. And I, I gave a good chuckle to the people who were working there. So if you have an opportunity, this next Saturday is going to be better than last Saturday. So get out to Baylor Park for their Luminary Walk. And also Carver County is having, is hosting a project, talking about the Highway 41 and Highway 10 changes in that road that affects people in Chaska. And so that's coming up on Wednesday from 4:30 to 6:30 at the CCC. So if you want to know what that road project is going to look like, really encourage you to attend that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. You don't know how important 41 in Chaska is until they close part of it off. Like at the Costco I was at yesterday.
Yes.
Speaking of that, there are no eggs at Costco. I was there yesterday, heads up. Beef and sausage dinner was a wonderful time. I, I forget how many people I get to reconnect with from going to Guardian Angels myself for eight years. I left there with about 15 pounds of the sausage, 10 of it not yet cooked. So maybe I'll have Commissioners over one by one for breakfast. It's a lovely thing. Bring your own eggs, please. Pete Pembroke, our friend, passed away up in Chanhassen. I was a Rotarian with him. I still am. As a reference, his daughter Haley Schubert is a city council member in Chanhassen. And so next to the definition of a great American is Pete's face. Believe me. That's it. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent? The rather long consent, is, is it the boards wish that I read all of the items on the consent agenda, just a verbal nod? No, I see no. Okay.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Lynch and a second by Uterman to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we were having a conversation beforehand and with a little, a few staff members too. We've been pretty smart at accelerating some of these projects and getting our bids in before the glut of people are putting their bids in. So compliments to Lynn and his team. I think it's gonna save taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars based on the intentional timing of these bids. I think you echoed the same thing, Hemsey. So wanted to make that comment. Thanks.
All right. Item 3.1, Mini Haha Creek Watershed Review. And Mr. Olson is gonna do that? Is that Mrs. Olson?
That is.
Not sure we've ever met. Hello?
I will certainly start it off and then introduce our executive director. 15 years ago, I was happy serving on the Lake Minnetoka Conservation District, representing Victoria. Of the 14 cities around that lake, we are western, we touch it on the western side. And having been a part of that for many years, I was asked by Carver County, this is actually this commission here, to represent Carver on the single seat that there is on the Mini Haha Creek Watershed District. And I thought to myself, how can I bring value to an organization that is a LGU, that has flood control responsibility and water quality? I also thought, how do I bring value to a property owner? And how do we bring value to the taxpayer? And so with, with that kind of a expectation, I learned who the board managers were and we essentially set direction and we set policy for the organization. But it's really the entire staff and the executive director that deliver, that execute on that direction. And I'm going to have James come up shortly. But over the years, he has restructured the entire organization at the watershed, so that it has become very effective. He has gone into a unique way of budgeting, which was based on business where I came from, which was zero-based budgeting. He has created an environment where people with multiple degrees in the area that we are specialists in have come and wanted to work. And then he's taken these people with a technical background and made them very effective public speakers. And so they can communicate very well now to the cities, into the park boards, into the people that we have these partnerships with. One of those partnerships is right here with the city of Victoria, where we have an MOU signed by both organizations that look out five and 10 years so that we plan in accordance. So there's a lot of value that is being exercised and perceived. One of the other things is that our attorney once said, if you think you're important, how many people are willing to write a letter to that effect? How many people are gonna write a letter detailing why it's important to have you in that position, whether that's an individual or the whole organization? So what we did is we looked at what people are saying and we thought, let's communicate up and down the creek to those people who could have a flood if it starts to rain. And why we manage the dam at Gray's Bay the way we do and why we do these things. And we have communicated to everybody and we get lots of positive feedback. We've had two very detailed articles in the Star Tribune over the years now that have shown all the reach that we have and the positive effects for the Twin Cities. In addition to that, we have had partnerships now that I mentioned with the park board, all the cities and our responsibility, as well as the organizations that we team with and share the cause for flood control and water quality. To that end, if you can bring value and if you can identify what it is that's important, create it, and then you can recognize it. At the end, you have the award, the pat on the back, the recognition. And we, in 2002, were Watershed of the Year, awarded by the DNR. In 2003, we had the Employee of the Year, who's sitting here in the back of the room, for that example, this morning. And in 2003, our executive director was named by the Minnesota Association of Watershed Districts as the finest executive director in the state. And so that's who I'm going to introduce right now to talk about our watershed, and that's James Whisker.
Nice introduction.
Were you supposed to stand for a standing ovation with that? It feels like.
That was a surprise for me as well.
I thought he was talking about Hemsey over here. We could have given that speech.
Yeah, thank you very much, Bill. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm, I'm award-winning. James Whisker, Executive Director for the Mini Haha Creek Watershed District. I'm very pleased to be here this morning with our partners at Carver County, providing an update on our work out in this portion of the geography. I was not expecting that kind of introduction. And we'll see if I can deliver, I suppose. So I'm gonna start by providing a light overview of the Mini Haha Creek Watershed District, who we are and how we approach our work. As I know, there's at least one new Commissioner and Commissioner Anderson on the board. So you can consider this part of your orientation to Mini Haha Creek as a key partner for the county. I'll recap some key work, some of our completed work, as well as initiatives that are underway. And then we'll finish with a light preview of our 2027 Watershed Management Plan. So beginning with our geography, which is quite large, Mini Haha Creek is one of the largest urban watersheds in the metro area. We cover 178 square miles, 29 communities and parts of both Hanipin and Carver County. And because of that, we have a very rich diversity of land use and a density of key and iconic resources like the Six Mile Creek Chain of Lakes, which has been the focus for the last five to eight years, the Lake Minnetoka, our namesake, Mini Haha Creek, the Chain of Lakes in Minneapolis, and of course, Mini Haha Falls. In terms of vision, I've said this before and I'll say it again, I think we're quite aligned with Carver County as the district believes that natural systems and the character of the land underpin local identity and it creates a sense of place. And so when properly integrated, we really view, as Bill mentioned, that the watershed work is an essential component of building thriving communities. And in this case, the sustainable growth for Carver County. Because land and how we choose to use the land as a community affects the water, how much water there is and the levels of pollution in the water. And given the fact that the watershed district doesn't actually own all the land and we don't control all the decisions that are made about the land, whether we're working on building projects or shaping policy, we're always thinking about how the watershed investments, our time, our money can be catalysts for our partners' goals in the built environment. And we do that by starting with science and data-driven understanding of what's happening in the watershed. And then we layer in our partners' objectives, which might relate to transportation and infrastructure, community development, parks and open space, and of course, the community to create amazing places in the watershed that are good for the environment, but they're also good for communities and the people that live in them, which I think stresses the importance we place on working in partnership. And of course, putting focus in areas of high need and high opportunity, like Carver County. That philosophy has us taking a really tailored approach across the watershed to the unique needs of our community partners. This is one simple example of why we think that's important. This map simply shows hardcover, the amount of pavement in the watershed. And right away, you can see striking differences in the amount of development and hardcover in our eastern communities like St. Louis Park in Minneapolis versus the upper watershed in Carver County with Victoria and Lake Town Township, which means that the strategies that we deploy here must reflect those landscape and community differences. So that tailored work in this geography began in earnest about eight years ago, based on recognition that the 27 square miles highlighted here of land contain important regional needs with many impaired waters that drain downstream to Halsted Bay, which requires the single largest water quality improvement of any water body out of our 120 lakes in the district. And also that there be opportunities, given the relatively rapid growth that was underway at the time. To develop a roadmap to guide successful project implementation, we looked across the 14-lake interconnected system to understand, number one, the pollutant load that might be running off of the landscape. Number two, the legacy phosphorus that might be trapped inside lake sediments and resuspended. And then also common carp populations and their impact as they move through this interconnected system on water quality and habitat. And we use that science. And then we convened a coalition of partners to understand their plans and priorities and to make sure our approach reflected local context. And the results of that effort was a three-pronged, simple strategy that breaks the geography down into key management units focused on targeting wetland restorations, restoration and preservation of the broader landscape and in-lake management to improve water qualities all the way from the headwaters down to Halsted Bay. Since forming this partnership and setting that shared vision, we've been able to leverage and pipeline almost $2 million of outside funding into Carver County. Here's a cross-section of projects. We've secured almost a quarter million dollars to treat 22 acres of land prior to it entering Auburn Lake, which directly supported downtown and infill development in the heart of Victoria. We worked with national home builders like Lennar to integrate wetland restorations into their housing developments, ultimately restoring 20 acres of wetlands on site, cheaper than it would have been for them to go to a wetland bank. And using the latest science, we leveraged almost $1 million in state funding for one of the largest common carp management efforts in the state, and alum dousing, which has seen Wasserman Lake trend towards hitting state standards for water quality for the first time in its monitored history. And through that partnership with the county and the city, we're able to acquire 33 acres of the last remaining undeveloped land around the lake to deliver the Wasserman Preserve. My clicker. Come on, clicker. You can do it. There we go. Which provides public access to a restored Wasserman Lake, which is shown here with the picnic shelter gathering space. I think it's the size of these great hero shot pictures. So bear with me while the computer tries to keep up. We've also integrated nature play, which should be coming up here on the screen in just a moment. I think, there we go. And these nature play elements really allow kids in the digital age, I was talking to Commissioner Uterman about this on the front end of the meeting. In this digital age, it's allowing kids to really connect with and immerse in our natural environment.
You know, the grandparent in me says, you know, somebody could get hurt there.
Yeah. Those are my kids and one of them did get hurt. Oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you, IT. And then there's also space for people to gather and foster community. I think I've heard in the past, Commissioners have used this space with their families and friends in the community. And of course, I think really, really important for this park, which is on the highest point of land overlooking the lake. It provides access to the water through the boardwalk to a peninsula of land. And just a little bit further downstream, I will admit, it's slightly over the Carver County border, but it's part of the work that we're doing in this geography. At the end of 2023, into 2024, we were really proud to finish our work at the Six Mile Marsh Prairie. This restored almost 200 acres of prairie and oak savanna with a one-mile nature loop connected to the Dakota Regional Trail. So if you haven't been out here, I highly encourage it. It's just down the street or just down the trail from Galewood's Farm. And this And this project celebrates both the agricultural heritage of the land. I heard the Commissioners on the front end of the meeting reporting in on the changing dynamics around farming, with the preservation of the iconic red barn that the community knows and loves, and also celebrates the return of the prairie, which reduced nutrient loading by hundreds of pounds to Halsted Bay and provides amazing view sheds and opportunities to engage throughout the site. So that's a little bit of recent accomplishments. I'll turn now to some of the work underway. This map's probably familiar to everybody on the Commission and is front of mind for us as well. This is the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan, and it contains a series of projects planned to address the transportation needs of Chaska, Chanhasan, and Victoria, both today and as they continue to grow in the future. And our goal, as the watershed district with all of these projects, not being a transportation agency, has been to be of service and value, as Bill mentioned, to ensure regulatory process serves its environmental purpose, but also that our involvement helps bring clarity, focus, streamlines process, and identifies creative partnerships. In terms of an update on our end, I saw a lengthy consent agenda, a number of agreements related to 41 and 11 and other road projects as part of this plan. The 511 and 11 projects were both recently distributed for public comment by our staff as their application reached a level of completeness. These projects presented, I think, some opportunities for some creative cross-pollination. 511, when it originally came to the watershed district, was positioned for a variance for floodplain issues. However, by brokering connections across the different engineering and project teams and with Three Rivers Park District in the support of county staff, floodplain mitigation for the 511 roundabout was provided inside the 11 project. And so, both projects fully meet the rules, and we've preserved 100-year flood storage in an area that already has flood sensitivities. On a somewhat related note, now the project is out for public notice. We are seeing some engagement from the public. In particularly, we've received a couple of calls last week from residents up on Zumberlake, which have questions about the County Road 11 culvert. For the county board that is or maybe isn't tracking, the culvert under 11, which drains the upper part of the watershed, Zumbra Stone and Sunny, has been redesigned to reduce clogging during high flows while not changing the flood profile in any negative way upstream or downstream. And of course, we have the Trunk Highway 5 project, which, given the spatial constraints, does involve some wetland impacts. Here, I'll say, despite creative efforts across all of the project teams in partnership with the watershed to identify local mitigation for wetlands, the federal government, the Army Corps, has expressed a strong policy preference for banking. Unfortunately, on a project like this, that effectively mines wetlands outside of the county, and those are some of the natural resources that make this a great place to live, work, and play. That's really because there's no wetland banks within the Carver portion of the Minnehaha watershed, which is something we're explicitly focused on and perhaps an area of future and ongoing collaboration with the county, given your long-term transportation needs and plans. In this area between Turbid and Lunston Lake, we're working in partnership with the City of Victoria to hopefully develop a greenway of restored wetlands that can improve water quality, they can provide for planned growth, and set the foundation for future pedestrian connections into Carver Park Reserve. Part of the planning for this work, we worked with Victoria inside its comprehensive plan to evaluate range of growth patterns. And we found that by regionalizing stormwater and not having it be done one subdivision at a time, and by restoring wetlands, we not only improved environmental outcomes, potentially reduced the lane miles of city street, as well as the number of stormwater facilities that the city would ultimately take ownership for, reducing the long-term O&amp;M burden cost to the taxpayers as this area grows and expands. And those findings were integrated into the city's plan as the Victoria Chain of Lakes and Greenway Policy, something that we are now implementing, as Bill mentioned, under a newly inked memorandum of understanding, which outlines our shared priorities for the Greenway, as well as opportunities to ally future plans and funds, while also coordinating planning, zoning, and permitting to drive better outcomes, but doing that work more efficiently. Some emerging examples in that area include the potential for a 30-plus-acre wetland bank around Turbid Lake. We're currently in dialogue with landowners and providing technical support for this potential restoration, which receives almost 60% of the drainage or runoff that goes to Turbid Lake and thus represents a really significant chance for water quality improvement, while also ensuring that there might be local wetland banks to support the impacts associated with future growth, as we just touched on. Something I know the county is already thinking about, given your work with the Watertown Wetland Bank. We're also working to restore 11 acres of wetlands between Wasserman and Auburn Lakes as part of our march downstream from Wasserman Lake to keep improving water quality on our way to Halsted Bay. This project, which would hydrologically restore this wetland complex, could improve water quality by 70 to 90 pounds. It's also planned to rehab portions of aging trail system for the city, shown here on the right. And to close our update this morning, you've seen a little bit about where we've been, some of the projects and the works. I want to finish with a look ahead and briefly profile our 2027 Watershed Plan, which we hope to start engaging all of our partners on later this year, with one key emphasis being the development of an integrated flood mitigation plan that balances both the upstream and downstream community needs across the watershed. One reason we see that as being important as we look ahead is that we've experienced a lot of volatility in weather over the last decade, swinging from deep drought to extreme wet. And we've had those cycles even within the last three calendar years. As an example, this chart shows the historic average rainfall cycles in blue. And here, we've added monthly time series showing where we exceeded normal rainfall patterns. And you look at this and on face value, you say, well, that seems reasonable, that's not too significant, that's how averages bear out. But when we look at the accumulated departure over that period of time, we... After the flood of record, that large gray bar on the left in 2014, we went on to have the seven wettest years ever recorded. The, we accumulated an extra three feet of surplus water in the watershed. That extra 36 inches of rainfall depth decreased all available surface storage, as well as raising regional groundwater levels, creating flooding from the ground, making the impact of every subsequent small runoff-producing event more significant. And so, this is an example of how, beyond the floods that we're used to, the 100-year floods, continuous rain for six to seven years in those sorts of patterns just decreases all the storage and makes us that much more vulnerable to smaller rainfall events, creating flooding and impacts for events that we're not necessarily used to seeing. Those rainfall patterns impact institutions. This is Methodist Hospital, shown here before our project, which had impact to its loading docks, impacting supply, delivery, and medical waste out for about 10 days. It's impacted public lands, which have made the news for a whole host of reasons, like the Hiawatha Golf Course, shown here from 2014. It's taxed our infrastructure and damaged our natural systems as well. And for us, it's underscored that we're still feeling the effects of land use decisions in parts of our watershed that were made way before our time. This is a snapshot of Minneapolis, which shows the filling of over 80% of our areas' wetlands, which are nature's filters and sponges. And one of the reasons that Minneapolis has some of the flood dynamic and water quality dynamics that it does. And at the center of all those impacts are people. People who we found liked to network on social media, looking for answers, building community narratives, finding connection, and people who then turn to local government and sometimes their legislators, looking for answers, answers to questions like, why is this happening? I've never seen this happen before. Why is this happening now? Who's responsible? Is it the watershed district, the DNR, Carver County, the city? And underneath all of that, the real question is, who's going to pay? Where's the money going to come from? And that's why the first prong of our strategy around this integrated flood mitigation planning revolves around a deeper understanding and leveraging technology, understanding the water patterns of today and predicting how those might change in the future with changes in both rainfall and changes in land use as infrastructure and land use patterns change, so that we can build community resilience. The first way we're doing that is with a real-time sensor network we've deployed across the watershed. This provides short-term forecasting for emergency managers. It uses National Weather Service forecasts, which are never right, just like any forecast. But then we measure the direct rainfall across the district because sometimes it rains two inches up in Independence and it only rains a quarter inch down here in Carver County. And that makes a tremendous difference in the amount of volumes that are moving through the system. And then finally, we gauge our lakes, wetlands, and streams to see what is the actual response on the landscape to those rainfall inputs. What that's allowing us to do is not only give real-time, short-term forecasts, so emergency managers can be more nimble and protect more properties more efficiently, it's allowing us to take that very, very large dataset of forecasts, measured rainfall, and gauged response on the landscape, and use machine learning to improve the quality of forecasts in the future to be more predictive and provide more time for emergency managers. The second area we're building is an understanding of hydrology and predictions, not mid or short-term, but for the future, is in long-term scenario planning. This has been supported by legislatively funded, two-dimensional hydraulic and hydrologic model. It's just a fancy word for taking 29 cities' worth of storm sewer data, which exists in different data silos, and integrating that with land surface elevation, groundwater, and surface water data, and allowing us to think about future rainfall patterns, future land use patterns, and then determine the location and magnitude of impacts. But most importantly, what solutions are going to yield the greatest return on investment to protect as many properties as possible for the least amount of investment? Things like, where might we expand floodplain storage around Minnehaha Creek or other water bodies? What city policies could help guide future development patterns based on where groundwater may be high, where it might not be high right now? Where we can increase conveyance in the grid and storm sewer capacity without having negative downstream consequences? And bringing that back, and to close with the differences across the watershed, it can help us think about the paved eastern portion of the watershed and the wetland-rich western portion of the watershed in Carver County. We can understand how flood patterns might change as Carver County develops and urbanizes, and how do we retrofit urban storage into the urban landscapes in the east? But importantly, how do we preserve and create and expand wetland storage upstream where it already exists? So with that, concludes our Thinker Annual Update of Work that we've done in partnership with Carver County for the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. You've seen a little bit about how we approach our work, some work that we've got under our belt, thanks to you all, and work that's in pipeline, both projects and on the policy planning front. So, thank you again for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Udoman.
Couple questions. One, Bill, did you get an award this year? Because it seems like you should get one too. First time we met was when we unveiled Wasserman. And what a wonderful project that was, costly. So, I hope you get an award there. But curious how that's performing in the Wasserman. And then also, you talked about the planning or in your example of Minneapolis, the lack of planning and the impact that it's had 20 or 30 years in the future. We're in the midst of considering what our 2050 comp plan looks like. Is there anything we should be considering? Is there any you guys are considering that might be relevant for our discussions in the next year as it relates to 2050 comp plan?
That's a great question, Commissioner Udoman. I think by all reports, Wasserman Preserve is performing fantastically. It's a great number of visitors. We've just re-upped our 2025 vegetation management contract, so the park's going to be getting a new wave investment from the watershed and some TLC on the planting front, which is really what sets the place apart. In terms of things that we should all be thinking about in the future, I think one of the seeds that I wanted to plant today is, one of Carver County's most tremendous natural assets are its wetlands. They're nature's filters, they're your sponges, and developing smartly around those wetlands is what's going to keep Carver County resilient. We did a NOAA study about 10 years ago comparing and contrasting today's rainfall patterns and future rainfall patterns in eastern portions of the watershed and western portions of the watershed. And Victoria and Carver County were shown to be much more resilient just based on the land use development patterns that have preserved those wetlands. One of the things that we need to keep an eye on from a policy and planning perspective is as development comes in, sometimes piecemeal, developers purchase one piece of property, they're stubbing out infrastructure. That sets the development pattern for the very next parcel, but the developers aren't always thinking about the next parcel because they may not have it under option or ownership. What we found with the City of Victoria is sometimes that infrastructure's stubbed out right where there's a wetland on the adjacent parcel, which forces wetland impact because the extension of the road needs to run through wetlands. Now you're surcharging, you've got higher costs, higher maintenance costs, and those are all passed on to the taxpayer and are public costs, just in terms of delivering infrastructure for the next development. Bigger picture, then we're losing wetlands. There are, there've been changes in federal policy that are trickling down to a state level that impact the county and the watershed that favor wetland banking. And, which sounds great because you get a larger, higher-quality wetland somewhere else that's easier to maintain. But oftentimes, those wetland banks aren't in the location where the impact is. So, we're losing the wetland resources we have in Carver County, and maybe we're replacing those in Scott County. Or in the instance of the Watertown Bank, you know, you are thinking ahead, you have some of those bank credits still in Carver County. I think those are two of the key things, is the development patterns do have an impact on the landscape, and we should be thinking about if impacts are necessary, how can we plan proactively to create banks and restore wetlands in this growing portion of the counties, particularly in the western growth area of Victoria, so that we can absorb that growth and not exacerbate flooding and water quality issues? Because it's why people want to be here, is the quality of the water and the rich park system and the open space.
Thanks. JP, Commissioner Fahey, rather.
James, just to that point with Lake Town Township and Six Mile Creek, how is that holding up?
Good question, Commissioner Fahey. Do you have something specific you'd like me to drill down on?
In general, no.
Okay.
Ultimately, it ends up flowing further into Six Mile Marsh and so on. And if that's the start, basically, for us in Lake Town Township is...
Right.
Is the creek performing the way it should be? Does it need additional maintenance, et cetera?
It's a great question, Commissioner Fahey. One of the maps that we showed up here, and you might have access to this after the presentation breaks, the 27 square miles and the 14-plus lakes into manageable management units. The headwaters of the Six Mile system passes through three lakes, so it starts in Pearson Lake, and then it flows south and east into Marsh Lake, and then it comes north into Wasserman Lake. And those three lakes really act as one management unit and system. Pearson Lake water quality, with it being a headwaters lake, has remained quite high. There are resident concerns around ditched wetlands and, you know, agricultural uses that we have seen increased sediment discharge and nutrient discharge into the north side of the lake. But our monitoring of Pearson Lake shows that it remains meeting state standards. It's sort of an A grade for water quality, as is Marsh Lake. Wasserman Lake, we really started there in the headwater system because it was impaired, and it was a pretty significant distance away from meeting state standards. Through the investments that we've made, two out of the last three years, we have seen the lake meet state water quality standards. So the work's perhaps not done. Two out of three isn't a perfect trend, but we've made massive improvements in the quality of Wasserman Lake. And that's why we're now moving down to Auburn, the Auburn Wetland Systems, but also Turbid-Lunston, which is sort of a side chain. Turbid Lake is independent of Pearson, it drains up to Lunston Lake and then hits the main stem there. So, we feel like we've done a lot of great work in the headwaters and are progressively moving our way down. There are opportunities for wetland restoration, wetland banking, and continuing to preserve and improve water quality in the headwater system, but it really requires partnership with willing landowners. And as the area develops further west and the infrastructure moves west into the western growth area. So we have ideas, but no immediate plans for those three projects. But I would say, on the whole, we've been making really solid, measured progress in removing water bodies from the impaired waters list and protecting what we have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch.
I'd like to say, James, you lived up to your billing. Did a great job. It was a great presentation. It was interesting seeing the Minneapolis maps where you can see that they actually filled in the wetlands and has ramifications down the road. It was interesting, your hard surface map. And I looked at that, and it looked like mound, basically, an island in the middle of Lake Minnetaka. It's all hard surface, and you get your bluster two inches of rain and it runs right into the lake with no treatment whatsoever. It's interesting that you're praising all the wetlands and the retention ponds, and they do a great job of, you know, slowing the water into the creek. It's wonderful, but the timing of this is really wonderful too because right after you're done, we're going to get a presentation by the Mosquito Control Board, so. because right after you're done, we're going to get a presentation by the mosquito control board, so. Interesting. Great presentation, though.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I always found that to be a little bit of a contrast, building ponds and then paying for mosquito control. I'm certain that it's the best way to do it. I could sure use a good color copy of that impervious map you had.
Of course.
I'm aware of maybe only a small amount of conversations you've had with Minneapolis legislators and the flooding. And it would be a good map to show them that we're doing our part. I think they just sort of wanted us to turn the water off in Carver County.
That's right.
They wouldn't flood that drainage ditch they call Minnehaha Creek. But it sounds like you've got that pretty well under control.
I think so, Chair Workman, Commissioners. We love Carver County, we love the partnership, we love the work that we've been able to accomplish out here. But we are also working in other focal geographies. I think those contrasts are interesting because it's different communities in different stages of build-out at different periods of environmental planning and regulation. And so there's different problems, and that means there's different solutions. We did in 2024, Inc., a 20-year partnership with the City of Minneapolis, Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. After many, many years of discussion and, you know, controversy with high surface and groundwaterers down in Minneapolis, you're right, that did generate a lot of attention, focus, hearings, questions. And what we've really focused on is telling the story of the work that we've done in the upper watershed above the lake with Carver County, the work that we've done in the urban greenway in Hopkins-St. Louis Park, and framing the fact that we think that there are problems and solutions to be delivered in Minneapolis, too. So we now have a joint steering committee with elected officials from all three agencies, the watershed, the city, and the park board, that serve as a steering committee to think into the future and plan and align investment in water resources inside the city. So we're really working at both ends of the watershed on similar problems, but in completely different landscapes, which keeps the work interesting and fun.
The County Road 11 culvert. So I'm not sure if you've had discussions with Mr. Holly out there, is he one of the people that has contacted you? You've made changes. I'd love to see that. I guess that's our culvert, right?
That's correct.
Linden-Robgens culvert. So maybe we hike out there. It's not far. But it would be interesting to see that. Is that something that's got Mr. Holly on Lake Zumbra satisfied? Because I know he wants a bigger pipe.
Satisfied might be...
My word.
Yeah, stronger way of putting it. I think we, in this final stretch for the project, I know timelines are really important, particularly with the different funding streams and having projects ready for bid. I think our staff actually this morning had, while I was here, were having calls with your engineering teams to discuss how we want to handle final points of engagement with the Zumbra Association. I think Mr. Holly's been a great asset for the Zumbra HOA. We spent many evenings and days together, you and I, and him, and Three Rivers Park District and the DNR and Victoria, doing a system-wide flood study that took two years to show that if you over-manipulate the 11 culvert, you actually impact people downstream, both inside the park system and some residences that are down on Auburn. It would materially change their flood stage. So I think the project team's taken a very sensible approach, both to their civil work and within the state regulatory framework, to improve emergency overflow that reduces clogging and the maintenance burden when there's high flows, so that the system can drain without negatively impacting downstream or upstream flood stage. So a no-rise is really the gold standard when you have existing flooding conditions is what kind of adjustments can we make to the system without increasing the 100-year flood stage? And that's really the standard that the design teams landed on, that's permissible while improving things as much as they can. I think Mr. Holly's otherwise occupied with things in his personal life. There are a couple of other residents that have reached out and happy to get you their names. We're planning on having calls with them this afternoon and tomorrow to determine if they are satisfied with the engineering rationale or alternatively, they have the opportunity to request that that permit be heard by our board if they have concerns. But at the end of the day, the culvert's been designed, like I said, to improve high-flow operations without increasing flood stage and meet state and watershed district regulations, and I think is a sensible design.
And Mr. Holly has to talk about, and this would also be a parks, Three Rivers Parks, actual removal of that culvert coming out of Zumbra, where a past farmer may have created a land...
Right.
A bridge, but actually taking that out and maybe bridging it. With the trail, is that something that's in the works?
It's another great question, Chair Workman, Commissioners. So we're talking about culverts. There's one in 11. And then as you go upstream, there's one that controls flow leaving Zumbra. Immediately downstream, you have Stone Lake from the north and then Sunny Lake. And that's, it's those three lakes that go under Highway 11. And the issue that we've pointed out that I think has been the subject of a lot of study is if you actually increase the size of the opening from Zumbra Lake, there's backflow conditions, the hydraulics are very interesting and dynamic. So water from Stone and Sunny will actually move upstream into Sunny Lake or into Zumbra Lake if that culvert's expanded. So it actually increases the flood risk profile for residents if we were to, if that culvert were to be expanded, which is what they've, you know, historically asked for. That culvert is being looked at, I think, by Three Rivers Park District for replacement on some sort of concurrent basis with Highway 11. We've made sure that the engineering teams had a joint meeting that they're all using the same models and that that work's being planned concurrently. But the real issue for, I think, the Zumbra residents is when those homes originally went in, they have basements that are located below the ordinary high water level, which isn't a great spot for a basement. And so there's only so many solutions that you can actually implement without making things worse with the infrastructure that you have. And I think the, like, bringing it back to Highway 11, the county's done a good job designing that to improve efficiency, flow, and operations without impacting flood stage. And then Three Rivers is working in a coordinated fashion on the outlet.
And you were talking about what we call culvert number one, three being under 11.
If that's the...
We go one, two, three.
Convention, okay.
So... Yeah, very scientific. But so there won't be a bridge there. That pipe is going to stay there. That's doing its job to control the...
That culvert number one, Chair Workman, Commissioners, is going to be replaced. Three Rivers is working on a design for that. It will be improved. It's deteriorated. So that will probably improve conditions for Zumbra. It's being done in a way that, similar to 11, will improve high-flow conditions and maintenance issues. Those were concerns from the HOA, if you remember, both flow-through ditch channels and then both culverts. And so think the Three Rivers culvert, culvert number one, is going to be improved. It will be replaced. It's not going to be massively expanded in capacity because that will increase the flood risk or negatively affect the flood risk for the homeowners upstream. So it will improve the flow during high-water conditions, and it will alleviate some of the clogging issues so that flow's moving. But it will not expand so that hydraulics can push water upstream into their basements. So it's a real balancing act.
It is. I've had to learn that. It's very, very, very complicated. Let's get on our fatty bikes and take a look at it. Do you think the name Turbid for a lake is a really popular one, and what's going on there? How did...
Yeah, who named that?
Every time it comes up, I'm like, whose idea was this?
The Chair Workman, Commissioners, you know, there are a number of lakes in the state called Turbid.
So it's not a good adjective.
It's not on its own. I think we see the irony, too. There, we have actually our Six Mile Planner, Kaylee Sirmack, has gone through the lake name-changing process before in Hennepin County. And you'll maybe find it ironic that the county board has a role in approving lake name changes. So as our work unfolds out there, and if we improve water quality, maybe we can contemplate a name change.
Just as long as it's not workman.
Yeah.
I don't want some dirty lake. Maybe a bay and a tonka or something. Mr. Whisker, you, we get to talk to a lot of smart people as county commissioners. And you're one of them who we feel, once we talk to you, we feel smarter ourselves. So thank you so much.
Thank you for the partnership, the Carver County Commission and your staff.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Olsons. Team Olson. All right. We're going to move on to item 3.2. We do have the mosquito control folks in here. I don't recognize them. I've spent 22 years on that. And so I don't recognize everybody. I hope it's run as excellently as it has in the past.
Oh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Daniel Huff. I'm the new Executive Director for MMCD. So I hope that you are correct and that we are run as well or better than we have in the past. Scott County, excuse me, Carver County, we just were at Scott County, so forgive my fumble there. Carver County is represented on the MMCD Board by Commissioner Fahey, who was our Vice Chair this year, and we welcome Commissioner Anderson to our board this year. We, I really appreciated the presentation on wetlands and the important role that they play in ecological function of storing water, reducing floods, creating habitat and biodiversity. One thing they also do is they do breed mosquitoes, and that's where we come in. To make sure that those wetlands are doing all those wonderful things are also not breeding too many mosquitoes. So Alex Carlson is our Public Affairs Manager. He's going to be talking about what we do, how we do it. And then I'm also joined today by Trevor Navatki. Trevor is one of the supervisors at our Jordan facility. And Jordan, our Jordan facility serves both Carver and Scott County. So thank you for the invitation today, and I'll turn it over to Alex.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Again, my name is Alex Carlson. I'm the Public Affairs Manager. I have been here the past couple of years, so hopefully you've seen this presentation before. I'm sure you're all mosquito experts by now, but I'm still going to review some of the most important things to know about mosquitoes here in Minnesota and then provide some updates on what we saw last year and what we're looking for this coming year. And I know when it's a minus 10-degree day, mosquitoes and ticks are on top of mind for everybody. So hopefully this will answer some questions that you might have. So just to review, we serve the seven counties in the metro area as a special taxing district. So we've been around since 1958, and as Dan mentioned, we have 18 county commissioners that serve on our board, representing Carver, it's Commissioner Fahey and Commissioners Anderson. Over 2,900 square miles and 3 million people live in our service area. And the median home in the Twin Cities pays about $11 per year for all of the mosquito control services. So we think that's a pretty good deal for the services provided, which include comprehensive mosquito control, mosquito-borne disease, and tick-borne disease suppression and surveillance. We really consider ourselves public health first. So our main goal is the public health mission of controlling mosquitoes and reducing mosquito-borne disease and tick-borne disease. We do a lot of public education because we can't be in everywhere all the time, so that people can help us reduce mosquitoes as well. And then we have started since the late 1980s, we've done a black fly program as well, which are the biting gnats that come out of rivers and streams. In Minnesota, we have about 52 species of mosquitoes, only about half of which bother with people at all. So about half the species that we have exclusively feed on birds or frogs or other non-mammals. But we do have about 20 that do feed on people exclusively or preferably. The big thing with mosquitoes, keeping with the theme of water, is the standing water becomes mosquito habitat. And so we really follow precipitation patterns during the summer. About an inch of rain is enough to trigger what we call a mosquito brood, which means a new batch of eggs is hatched and they're going to be coming out of the water. The cycle lasts about a week, so when those eggs hatch, it's about a week later that we see that big surge in mosquito population from them all coming out of the water. So we have a very short window to get our materials into the water to control those mosquitoes. When we think of mosquito habitat, you probably have seen these images already today, but looking at those areas that hold permanent water, floodwater, or the man-made habitats that can hold water. So this is just part of our public education reminder to people that anything that can hold stagnant water can become mosquito habitat. There are certain species that actually have kind of evolved to prefer man-made habitats. They like buckets and containers and waste tires and catch basins. And so reducing standing water is a big part of mosquito control. When you see our trucks out, chances are we're doing wetland surveillance. We spend a lot of our days going out to those various bodies of water and figuring out where the larva is. So we use our favorite tool. It's called the long-handled dipper. So we go out, walk into the water a little ways, skim the surface where the larva tends to congregate, and try to get a count and bring those samples back. We also do adult surveillance where we're setting up traps or different ways to collect the flying adults and bringing those back to the lab as well. There we go. And our entomology lab in St. Paul has several full-time entomologists, as well as a seasonal staff that does taxonomy during the summer, basically trying to figure out if those larval samples are species that can affect people and needing to control follow-up. And then for the adult samples, we're separating them out to see if they're disease vectors. We have a vector ecologist on staff that can actually test on-site in St. Paul for the presence of West Nile virus. So we can be very proactive when it comes to disease outbreaks. If we're finding the mosquitoes and finding them before they're biting people, we can really make a big impact. And we consider ourselves a larval control agency. So when people see our helicopters out, what we're doing is we're dropping these dry granules, these larval control materials into the water. And they have an active ingredient that's toxic to mosquito larvae specifically. So it'll disrupt the gut of a mosquito larva and prevent them from coming out of the water as an adult mosquito. And so whenever you see our helicopters out or our field staff out, most of what we're doing is larval control. And you can see the grid down there on the bottom just shows year over year. We've really decreased the number of adult control acres we're doing and increased the number of larval control acres we're doing. And you can see the story kind of there is 2021 through 23 were drought years with not a lot of summer rain. So the larval acres were down. And then last year was a very wet year with lots of rain. Almost every week, we had to have helicopters out. So big jump in the mosquito control acres.
Alex, is there any chance to get the old bubble helicopter back?
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. I think that those are out of commission. We contract our helicopter with Scott Helicopter Service, and I don't think they're using the bubbles anymore.
That's what I kind of thought. Darn it.
When we talk about mosquito-borne diseases, our main ones of concern are West Nile virus, which is the most common that we have here in Minnesota. See anywhere from a few to several dozen cases each year, mainly affects older adults. We have Jamestown Canyon virus, which is found in spring mosquito species. Lacrosse is a big one of concern for us because this one tends to affect younger people. It can be very harmful to young kids, found in species that like tree holes and waste tires. Triple E, your eastern equine encephalitis, it's actually the most deadly mosquito-borne disease. It's very rare. There's never been a human case in Minnesota, but we still monitor to ensure that we don't see any. And then dog heartworm, good reminder that your pets are susceptible to mosquitoes as well. So anything you can do to give them preventives is helpful. Environmental stewardship is very important to us. We want to make sure that we're controlling the mosquitoes that are harmful to people and not causing any residual impacts on the environment. So we take special precautions to make sure that our materials are specific to mosquito larvae and not going to harm beneficial pollinators or other animals or human health or anything like that. And so we do a lot of our own internal studies and reviews, but we also have a technical advisory board, basically a panel of scientists that reviews our practices annually. They actually just met last week and provided recommendations to make sure that we can be as effective and safe going forward. So last year, the big story was the rain. We saw a lot of rain last year. A lot of my son's baseball games were canceled. It was a very rainy summer. And so that led to not as many mosquitoes as we would have expected. So we did see an early spring when it came to just the weather. It was almost a nonexistent winter last year. So this time last year, we had already found our first deer tick of the year on February 5th of last year. And then we followed our first mosquito larva about a week later from now, February 26th. So last year, the big story was an early spring, wet summer, but we didn't see the big surge in mosquitoes. The main reason is our two main human nuisance species, they were really impacted by the previous drought years. So the numbers were really down low. The first sampling that we did, we didn't find a lot of, they're the 80s vexans or the cattail mosquitoes. We didn't find a lot of those until the end of the summer. There were fewer instances of West Nile last year. That has to do with a lot of the rain. West Nile mosquitoes tend to thrive in hot, dry conditions because they like, you know, when catch basins hold that hot stagnant water, they thrive in that. Versus a lot of rain washes that water out and prevents them from really taking hold. And then we saw a big surge in black flies in the spring last year, mainly because of the flooding that we saw along the Minnesota River. So big, big spring peak in those biting gnats, and it was tolerable the rest of the summer. They declined quickly after that. So looking at Carver County specifically, you can see some, the areas where things increased. We saw a lot more larval inspections, a pretty big increase in acres of larval treatment in response to the rain that we were getting. Declined the amount of adult treatment, and you can see just comparing the number of acres. Declined the amount of adult treatment, and you can see just comparing the number of acres. We do significantly more larval treatment. And then other things were down a little bit, catch basins and adult treatment. The biggest thing there is we had to be so active with our helicopters. We just didn't have staff time to do some of those additional things, like catch basins and like some of maybe adult control and things like that. We did increase our tire pickups last year, so that's a service that we provide, which I'll talk more about in a second. And then a big thing that was a story, especially in kind of the Chaska-Carver area, was we saw a huge surge in customer inquiries, calls and emails coming into our office. The most common call we get by far is what we call a mosquito annoyance report. Somebody calling us to say, "Mosquitoes are bad. What can you do to help?" or "Black flies are bad." That's by far the most common call that we get. But we also take calls requesting tire recycling or just informational calls as well, and we track all of those. Just looking at the budget side of things, so our budget is distributed among the seven counties, and at each county, it's based on the population of that county. So we are increasing our budget next year to account for some staffing increasing to kind of help with some of the program changes that we're seeing. But for Carver County, just the way that things shook out, actually the levy or the amount specific to Carver County is declining by $9,000 next year, or for the current year, for 2025. And again, just a reminder, the median home pays about $11 per year. So even if it declines, you know, a little bit, it's only a couple cents likely that they're gonna see you or when it goes up and down. Looking ahead to this year, so we have some exciting changes coming this year. First one is with drones. We've been slowly rolling out drones over the past couple of years and trying to learn them, how we can use them most effectively. This year, we now have purchased a drone for all six of our field facilities. So every area will see some drone activity. The really benefit of drones is they're good for those small to medium-sized areas that are too small for the helicopter. So in the past, staff have had to put on the chest waders, walk into the pond, use a backpack to try to distribute the materials. It takes a lot of time. There's risk of injury with trips and falls, and it wasn't even distribution of material. So the drone can be programmed to fly in perfect patterns so that it's getting evenly distributed material. It's a lot faster for our staff to load and unload. And there's a trained pilot assigned to each drone to make sure that, you know, we're following all the regulations and things like that. But it's an exciting new growth part of our program and hopefully gonna help with reducing mosquitoes overall. We have a new strategic plan coming out. We've been working with a company called Proudie Project, and they've been helping us kind of retool our strategies going forward, focusing on outreach and partnerships, resources and capacity, environmental sustainability, and then expanding our IPM program. Our goal is to, you know, provide services to as many residents as possible with the resources that we have. So we're gonna really be focusing on that this year. Increasing our educational outreach, our goal with educational outreach or with public education is general awareness of MMCD, ensuring people are taking their own precautions, so wearing bug spray, checking for ticks, dumping outstanding water, and then also for recruitment. Most of our staff are seasonal staff, and so it's always a challenge to get the 200 or so people that we need to help us fight the good fight every summer. And then a change this year, I mentioned our tire recycling program. We had a struggle last year keeping up with all the tire requests that we were getting, especially the small requests with only a few tires. So this year, we're gonna be having people bring the tires to us instead of sending our staff out. And so that'll save staff time a lot. So we're gonna have dedicated drop-off days at our facilities. So when people call in with tires, we're gonna tell them where they can bring them so they can bring them and get them on a specific date instead of those tires sitting out because our staff are busy doing helicopter work or other, other things that took precedent. This is a question we always get, is what are the mosquitoes gonna be like this year? As people are thinking about, you know, summer baseball games and camping trips and stuff like that. It's very hard to predict this early because it really depends on precipitation. If we see a drier year, there'll be a fewer mosquitoes. A wet year, we'll see more. The long-term weather prediction says Minnesota, they don't know. We're just in between a dry pattern to the west and a wet pattern to the east. So we don't know yet what we're gonna see. The one prediction we can make with some accuracy is a species that I refer to, the cattail mosquitoes. They actually hatch in the fall, overwinter as larvae, and then they come out the following summer. So they're in the water right now. Last year, we did, last fall, we did our surveillance to figure out where they are, and we saw the highest amount of cattail mosquito breeding that we've seen in over 10 years. And so we're seeing, predicting a big spike in cattail mosquitoes this year because of the heavy rain last year. So we're gonna do everything we can to get out to those areas where those mosquito larvae are and get our treatments in. But we're definitely gonna see an increase in that population. The good thing this weather's doing right now, this cold weather's doing, is it's really helping with those invasive species. So last year, we saw one of our highest recordings ever of Lone Star tick collections. There's a species that can spread the red meat allergy. You may have seen on the news. They're a species that's not native to Minnesota, but we've been finding more and more of them. They're really affected by this cold weather, and same with some of the more tropical mosquito species that may come up in a tire shipment or something like that. They'll be here for the summer, but their eggs won't be able to overwinter with these cold temperatures. So that's the good thing about the negative degrees that we're seeing right now. Resources for residents, our website is an excellent resource where people can go look at some interactive maps, and they can pull up their neighborhood. You can learn about helicopter activity. You can sign up for alerts. We also report any mosquito collections that we're, that we're seeing so people can kind of get a snapshot of the current mosquito picture. This is the maps that I mentioned. So you can click around these maps. You can click on an area that's outlined in orange and get about 20 years of data on what mosquitoes were found there, what type of site it is, what treatments were done. And I think it's really interesting, you know, people think of water and mosquitoes, but mosquitoes aren't coming out of, you know, large ponds or lakes. It's those smaller, more shallow areas. So it might not be the pond at the end of the road that's producing the mosquitoes. It's the roadside ditch where they're coming from. But we've got all that data on our website that people can explore and learn more about. You can sign up for email alerts. We send alerts where we're doing any adult treatments or when our helicopters are going out, so we can let you know when we're gonna be in the area. And then public outreach. I've mentioned this already, but a big part of our, you know, education is ensuring that people are helping out mosquito control. So you'll see our mascot, Victoria. There she is in the foreground. She makes appearances at events and parades. We'll be at the Carver County Fair again this year. And then, you know, there's our mosquito float as well. So you'll see our mosquito out and about when we have additional time this year. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Fahey.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, but Alex, I made in our community announcements, you and I are meeting with the city of Carver tonight at 5:30, and then next week on the 26th, we have an open house, correct? And if anybody wants to come and join that open house, that'd be a great time to learn some more. I think Commissioner Anderson will be there. We have a meeting prior to that.
Where's the, the open house?
In St. Paul.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Fahey. So the open house is to unveil our new strategic plan, and we're, we're in the process of kind of getting final approval on that. So that'll be after our commission meeting, which usually wraps up around 10, 10:30. So around 10:30 is when the open house will begin.
Okay. Question? Commissioner Anderson?
All right. So thank you for being here. On a personal note, if there was one mosquito left on the planet, it would find me. I'm that person. And I also live on a retaining pond, so that was a smart move from my standpoint. So a lot of this job is dispelling rumors, and one of the rumors is the pellets, I heard this recently. The pellets that are put out by the mosquito control board are poisonous to, and dangerous to our children and our pets. So how do you respond? How do I respond to that?
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Well, you could respond that the materials that we specifically chose, we chose because there's no harm to people. So in the, one of the pictures I've used in the past, you saw people handling it. Our staff can be exposed to it. We wouldn't put our staff in danger of being exposed to anything that could harm them. So the main ingredient that we use is BTI, and I encourage people to do research on BTI mosquito control because there's been many studies done about not just the human health impacts on it, but any non-target species impact. So when we think of, you know, our concern, it's bees and butterflies and those pollinators that are, you know, at risk and in concern. And so we make sure that our products are not harmful to those beneficial pollinators. And none of the products that we use are harmful to humans. So we're very, we take very, you know, heavy precautions to ensure that's the case.
All right. And, and I, I do live in Chaska, and so I would have been one of those people who complained about the amount of mosquitoes in Chaska. And, and I heard a lot of that, and I felt like the cool person that, that knew that this was, this was going on. So tell me, does our, and maybe this is for Administrator Hemsey, is their website attached to the Carver County website on the, this mosquito? Because that's a kind of cool thing to get updates on when helicopters are out and whatnot.
Board Chair Workman, Commissioner Anderson, likely. If not, we'll make it happen. We'll put a link out there. I'm sure it is, but we'll make sure.
I was one of those people when I saw the helicopter. I'm like, I breathe a sigh of relief. So thank you for the work you do. Can't wait until next week, so that'd be fun.
Thank you.
I do know that social media lights up with conspiracy level when that helicopter's flying around, and nine times, 99 times out of 100, it's, it's you guys. But I might throw in a, you know, an alternate conspiracy every once in a while. So what are you, what are you doing in your house, you know? Mr. Huff?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I wanted to also just add to Commissioner Anderson's concern about, or the concern she's heard from the community about the materials. As Alex pointed out, we very much target our materials just to mosquitoes. So that bacteria that Alex mentioned is a soil bacteria. It is naturally found in the soil. And it, this is what I've learned recently, which I think is just fascinating. So most animals have an acidic digestive system, right? We have stomach acid. Well, mosquitoes have an alkaline system, and these bacteria can only live in the alkaline system of a mosquito gut. They can't live in anybody else's gut. So for the rest of us, it's just one of the many type of bacteria that, you know, kind of come through us or exposed to and don't harm us at all unless you're a mosquito. So it's just one of these great, really targeted things that we have against mosquitoes. So that way, it doesn't impact us at all, which is kind of a cool, I don't know, biological chemistry fact that I, I just learned since I've been in this job.
All right. Well, I will pass that on to the conspiracy theorist.
Commissioner Ritterman?
Just a couple of questions that relates to drone. One, I've also been asked a few questions that are probably avoidable as to what's that buzzing overhead? You know, we often hear this time of year, the lights coming out of Shakopee and the UFOs that are landing. So perhaps there's a marker of some sort of blue dot or green dot or brown dot. So if somebody were to see your aircraft, they'd say, oh, if there's a brown dot, perhaps it's that. But question on the aircraft drones, I know we use a lot of drones too, increasingly so. They're really expensive to own and operate, and people need to have a license. Have we ever looked at partnership to utilize the same drones? Because there's a lot of unused capacity, or is it such a specialized drone technology that we have to have separate drones?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner, it's an excellent question. And I think about that, you know, we use, we have a lot of equipment that we use in the summer that we do not use in the winter. And we're always happy to partner with other governmental units to how we can share those resources. Our drones are specifically used to, you know, provide aerial application of, of material. So they're often used in agricultural settings, and then we just adapt it to mosquito control. So they are specialized in that way. But if there are ways that we can partner and share our resources, we always want to do so.
I elevate it because there's a tidal wave of unfunded state mandates coming our way, and we have hard decisions to make in the next year. If there's ways for partnership that don't impact some of our services and we get the same result. Next question as it relates to that is, are, is this, are these drones, can these drones be used to grab samples versus using human capacity? Because you said you have a challenge finding the 200 people. They can get into small areas. I had an interesting demonstration when I was in Bentonville, Arkansas, of using a drone for deliveries from Walmart. It's coming, right? So I know the technology is close, if not there. Can we use these drones to collect so we don't have to put people in harm's way and, and have to navigate the challenges of hiring?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, not at this time. We're always looking at how do we become more innovative and how do we use these tools in more innovative ways? We do not have that capacity right now. Fortunately, the sampling is not as difficult for staff. They can do that right on the edge. Where treatment, you have to treat the entire thing. But it is something I appreciate you raising the idea and something for us to think about.
Yeah. You just dial it in. Last thing, probably unrelated, but maybe I see James is in the back of the room. Turbid comes from a Latin word which means muddy or full of confusion. You probably already knew that, but I didn't, so I Googled it.
The word just spoke of muddy and dirty and, doesn't it?
Yes, thank you.
Mosquito, it's, it's, yeah, mosquito breeding.
When, when I last left the mosquito control after, after being there for 22 years, the legislature had changed statute and allowed the organization to be run by a person who was not an entomologist. Is that you, Mr. Huff?
Indeed, Mr. Chair. I am not an entomologist, and I don't even play one on TV. My background is public health and public administration.
Okay. Well, I think they did a good job. But yeah, we couldn't find entomologists, correct, was the problem. It was such a narrow thing that to be the Executive Director, probably have that public administration experience, and be an entomologist was not, not an easy thing. So probably harder than renaming a lake, so. Commissioner Lynch?
If I could, I'd like to just, great presentation. It's a lot of information. I'd like to thank Commissioners Fahey, Commissioner Anderson for serving on your board. There was a time when mosquito control only went on the eastern side of Carver County, and then they expanded to the entire Carver County. And it was much, I live in the western part, and it was, it was greatly appreciated. Because not only that, but there was a noticeable difference in the amount of mosquitoes, so you guys are very effective. It's, I see your, your cars and your helicopters out, and you have the conspiracy theories, but you have to be the one form of government where people are normally happy to see you. What are you doing? Oh, over here, yeah. Great to see you. But on the other hand, myself and Commissioner Fahey are gonna go do a bunch of township meetings here with the annual meeting. So we have the great news to tell them that the cattail mosquito is gonna be very high this spring, so we really appreciate that.
Spread the word.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we're gonna do everything we can to get at them before they hatch. Speaking of names, you'll notice that the two mosquitoes that bother us the most, one species' name is vexans, because they're vexing, and the other is the perturbans, because they perturb us all.
They all do perturb us.
Really? I know that it's been a few years now, but the black fly that comes out of the Minnesota River, and I think that's something that is very difficult to control. I would tell you, if you were in a golf league, the conspiracy theories about what to spread on your body so that the black fly stayed away from you. I think people were made millionaires for, for doing nothing. But do we know what that's gonna do?
So Commissioner, Mr. Chair, it all depends on the rain. One of the reasons they were so bad is when the river floods, we can't do treatment because our permit is to do treatment within the river banks. It's also just more dangerous for our staff during flood condition to do treatment. The black flies are, hey, this is great. We got more water to reproduce in, but we're really hampered there. But again, it, it depends on rain. For the species that we see, both in the Minnesota and the Mississippi, you know, there's always water there, so they're gonna grow. It really is whether we are able to get in there and control them or if we're flooded out.
Very good. Good to see you. Thank you, and we'll see you next year.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I have us a little behind. We're gonna do a public hearing. CCWMO Watershed Management Plan Amendment to Project List. So I think I'm gonna need a motion to open a public hearing.
Slow move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for the Carver County Water Management Organization Watershed Management Plan Amendment to Project List. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Mr. Moline?
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Apparently today's water day. I didn't know that when we planned this public hearing ahead of time, but it's good to see you, actually. We are here today to look at a plan amendment to our water management organization plan, which was adopted in 2020. The county board is the governing board for the WMO as a reminder. Couple of things enter in the public record here, the affidavit of publication, the updated table 5-5 of the CCWMO Water Management Plan, and the comments received during the public comment period and staff responses to those comments. So I'll give you a little background here in what we're amending today, and this may not be as educational as the last two presentations, but you are taking action today. action today, which is a good thing to see. Background on this, last, current water management plan was adopted in 2020. One of the policies in the plan is to update the project list, which is this table five five of the plan on a bi-annual basis. And the list was last updated in 2022. The project list is used to plan and budget for the W M O levy, which you adopt every year and to submit grant requests to the state, which is a, a primary source of funding for getting these projects done. One of the requirements of those grant requests is that the project be included in the plan. So if we only amended this plan every 10 years with a project list, it's going to be out to date fairly quick. So that's why we do this every two years or so. Background on the, the project list itself. So we prioritize this list based on several things which are included in our plan, including benefit to a priority water body. We have several water bodies in the plan which are identified as a priority. These include, you know, all the 22 plus lakes, all the wetlands, hundreds of miles of creeks and streams that we try and do some sort of priority on, on all those water bodies. We look at project specific water quality and volume control benefits, relationship to state impaired waters, the educational benefits of a project, partnership opportunities with either cities or landowners, and obviously cost benefit, is the project going to get what we want done here? Again, this is what we're amending, this table five five. This was included in your packet and available online as well. Essentially, the table has a project description, the sub watershed it's located in, the benefited water body, what type of project it is, the partners that are involved, the timeframe. We hope to get the project done and then the cost, both the total cost and then the estimated cost to the W M O to get that project done. Again, these are estimates, so almost in every case, they get refined as we get closer to approving those projects. So what changes, how are these changes determined? We looked at the projects that were completed. You'll notice in the table, there's a lot of projects that were done. We wanted to make sure we identified those. We clarified some of the projects. Some of them got split into multiple projects or we redefined what the actual project is. Projects that were recommended from feasibility studies, when, when you adopt W M O levy every year, sometimes there are feasibility studies included in that, that we get state funding for as well to identify is, are, is inaction appropriate around a lake or around a stream and what those projects actually are. We look at city township input, landowner input, some new problems that are identified around water bodies and then some staff analysis of those. So the summary of changes in this list, there are 25 new projects added to the list. We did identify 10 that were completed, removed a duplicate project, three of them were broken out into more specific ones that show up in that new list. And then no change, there's currently 50 other projects on the list that will remain during the life of the plan. Quick list of the types of projects we're looking at, I won't go through all these, but these are the different types of things we are going to spend money on and put in the ground, all the way from stream bank stabilization to wetland restorations to certain stormwater practices that would go working with cities on. We've been working on this. I want to recognize Kristen Larson in the room who's pretty much shepherded this whole project timeline through. We started on a draft list last summer, brought it through to our advisory committee and technical advisory committee in the fall. In November, the board authorized to release the draft for public comment. And we are back here today to consider adoption of this final list amendment. Comments we did receive, four state agencies commented on the, the changes. Mostly those were support or invitation for collaboration with the state. There was a comment to keep the completed projects on the list instead of taking them off, so we did do that. Lake Town Township submitted a comment of support. We had one citizen that commented and offered several thoughts about how we look at our plan approach. Most of those comments are probably more likely better addressed when we do a major update. This is considered a minor update. The comments were surrounded how we identify projects as a whole, how we look around this whole 300 square mile area. And our response mostly that is that's a, those are good things to consider when we do a major plan update, which will come, you know, essentially this plan's due for a major update by 2030. So we want to take those into consideration at that time. With that, Mr. Chair and the board, we're looking for a motion to adopt a resolution amending the 2020 C C W M O water management plan project list, and I can take questions.
Mr. Moline, do I see two or two resolutions? One ten and one oh two?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, there should just be one resolution attached.
Does anybody else see that in their packet?
Mr. Chair?
One ten dash two twenty-five.
Okay, and then behind it, you don't see one oh two? Right here?
Amendment.
Yes, you're, you are correct. No, he does have it.
Commissioner Lynch also has a special packet.
I don't have a special packet.
Well, I can, I can hand this to you. You know what? This goes back, it must be an error.
Mr. Chair, I can, I can clarify. I'm looking at this now. The resolution should be adopting ordinance, I believe, one ten.
Right.
Yeah.
One oh two.
And that maybe shouldn't have been in there.
Yeah.
I'll double check, see how you got your special packet.
With Lynch.
Chair vice chair.
You guys are special.
It's a conspiracy. Go right there.
I'm, Krista's in on it, obviously.
Krista, yeah. Good, more of the Mary.
Spread rumors.
Okay, I don't see, it looks like we got drainage people in here, but maybe not people that want to talk about this. But is anybody in the public, while we have a public hearing, want to speak to this? Seeing none, I would like a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Lynch, second by Fahy to close the public hearing, the C C W M O plan changes. Any discussion? Commissioner Fahy?
Mr. Chair, Paul, can we talk a little bit about Benton Lake as that continues to? We have it on number 21, we have number 23, number 73, just the cost benefit. I had the opportunity to, to do a canoe trip on Benton Lake. And the quality and talking to some of the locals, the water quality has really improved on that lake. Can you give us a little more update on those improvements?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fahy, so a lot of efforts on Benton. As you know, there's a quite active group around Benton, the Benton Lake Conservancy Group. Several landowners that have been involved pushing both us and the city for many years. Benton Lake's a very, it's a big challenge. Historically poor water quality that probably goes back decades and decades to both the treatment plant and, and ag drainage that have impacted that lake. We have seen improved water quality, particularly in Mavison, but it's, it seems to be also translating into Benton now. We've been doing work on carp in Benton Lake for several years, trying to not only reduce the carp population, but understand where they're breeding, how to control them better. We have a, I think, a, a carp barrier put in almost 10 years ago now at the outlet. We have a system between Benton and Mavison that's trying to, electric guidance system that only keep, that keeps the carp from getting into Mavison, but also trying to trap those and remove them, doing some fish netting for those carp. We've captured thousands of pounds of carp in the last several years, looking at doing some transplant of aquatic, native aquatic vegetation and potentially fencing those off so we can see, all right, if in areas where the carp aren't disturbing that bottom sediment, can we get some good native vegetation, which will help with other fish that are there. The Conservancy Group has in the past donated some funds, mostly to get a, some fish that can overwinter there, I think mostly bluegills for fishing opportunities, but they also been adding dollars for an aerator to keep some of the oxygen going during the winter as well. It complements the aerator we have there. So there's a lot going on. We are seeing some, again, slow increases in, in good water quality in Benton and want to keep working on that. But it's, it's a complex situation for sure.
Thank you for the update. And then, Mr. Chair, a couple more questions. Number 12, 13, and 14, we talked about the direct discharge incentives and unfortunately, there still are direct discharge systems in Carver County. Ultimately, how many are still left? Paul, if you have a number and can we get them on board to eliminate all the direct discharge of sewage into our water systems?
We're talking septic systems, Commissioner Fahy?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fahy, so we do, you know, every year, we've been working on this with W M O funding to get rid of these direct discharge systems. This will be back in front of the board, I believe, in April. We've got the next sub watershed group coming. We're trying to finish up Crow River and then backfill some areas in the other Beavins and Carver Creek areas that were missed. So we'll be back in April to look for board approval for the next cycle. Quick estimate on how many are left, I want to say probably anywhere from 50 to 100. The reason we don't know exactly is until we reach out to those landowners and, and get records of what's on, on site, sometimes we don't know until we've actually talked to those landowners. But I would say upwards of 100 that are left.
Thank you. And then one last question regarding Eagle Lake and Hyde's Lake. We talked about that on number 37, the curly leaf, the pond weed, and then all the phosphorus that, some of the future challenges for Eagle Lake. Both of those lakes are heavily ice fished. You go by either one of those lakes, there's quite a few ice houses out there. So the fish are responding to some of the stuff that you guys are doing, so great job with that. But overall, can you give us a little more detail on those two lakes?
So Eagle, I'll start with Eagle. You guys, board had a presentation about Baylor Park a few weeks ago and we're actually coupling with the Parks Department now in terms of landowner contact. We're doing a feasibility study on Eagle Lake to try and assess what are the best ways to improve the water quality there? Is it improving the vegetation, getting rid of that curly leaf pond weed, the milfoil that's there? Is it doing potentially an alum treatment, which is a, something that's been done on several area lakes? You put this aluminum product in the water and it, it traps the phosphorus and brings it down to the bottom. That might be a possibility there. We're looking at inputs to the lake, some of the wetland areas that have been sinks for phosphorus, absorbing all that fertilizer that comes in. Is there a way to trap that before it gets in the lake? So we're doing that feasibility study on Eagle, working with the landowners there. And then Hyde, similarly on the curly leaf pond weed, trying to see if we can get some state dollars to remove some of that. That tends to be a big source of phosphorus in the May-June timeframe. So if we can get that out early, potentially improve the water quality there.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lynch?
Great job, nice presentation. You did a, you do a really nice job working with the cities and the townships and not only that, but the residents too, because if Kirk sloughs off inside and plugs it up, they have, they're a wealth of information. I think what the information that Commissioner Fahy wanted, he wanted specifically where to put his fish house.
I caught that too.
We were all thinking it.
We'll find the right staff person to connect.
Appreciate that.
Good one, Commissioner Lynch. All right, I don't think I have a motion for the resolution yet, do I?
You do not.
For motion for a resolution adopting ordinance one one zero dash two zero two five, amending the Carver County Watershed Management Organization 2020 Watershed Management Plan.
So moved.
I would, we'll leave a second.
I got a motion by Anderson and a second by Lynch. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Time for him.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion to recess as the county board and convene as the Carver County Ditch Authority.
Okay. I have a motion by Lynch and a second by Fahy to recess as the county board and convene as the county ditch authority. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Findings and orders adopting redetermination of benefits for county ditches six, nine, and 10. One of those is my favorite. I forget which one, but. Mr. Fishman?
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Carver County is in the process of redetermining all of our ditch systems throughout the county. And on February 4th, the ditch authorities for six, nine, and 10 held a public hearing. The ditch authority received comments and then closed the public hearing and then directed the ditch attorney to create the findings and orders that are in your packet, reflecting the recommended redetermination of benefits and bringing this process to an end. So today at this time, we have the findings and orders for those three county ditch systems, six, nine, and 10. And with the request is for the board to approve those findings that were created by the ditch attorney called. I'm standing for any questions.
Mr. Fishman, when was the last time these were updated?
That's a good question. They've been, I believe one of them, we're not sure, has been updated since 19, early 1900s when it was created. There was one that had some activity in the 50s, improvement project, so it's likely it was, it was done then, but the records aren't real clear on last time these have been redetermined.
So early 1900s and 1950s, why are we rushing into this then?
Good question.
Well, there is, it really started with the, our, we have joint ditches where they're, the ditch systems are in two counties and our neighboring county were, started redetermining their ditches that impacted, that are included in Carver County. So we came to the board and decided, you know, as long as those are being done, should we do the rest of them and get them all current? And that was the direction of the board to do redetermination of benefits for all of the ditch systems throughout the county.
Thank you.
Okay, I see a couple of residents in the room who might have concerns. Do you want to listen to them briefly? Otherwise, we're ready to approve?
We forgot the name of the tree.
Sally.
I noticed that was not in the minutes. It's a bur oak, right? Bur oak, I want to say pin oak. Pin oaks don't get that big, do they? Yeah, of course. Please state your name and your address, maybe your ditch.
Denise Semino, one one zero two five, Highway 25 and Young America Township, and it's ditch number 10. And in addition to the comments I raised at the last meeting, I just wanted to add one thing, so I'm not repetitive. Mine is not the only residential property along that ditch. We have neighbors who also are on residential acreage. They don't farm the ditch along. It goes through their yards as well and it's yards, not fields. It's, it's part of their homes as well as ours. And so I just wanted to point out that as it's being prepared to be cleared out and everything, I just hope that the county bears in mind that this is not just one isolated tree in one yard, there's others. So that's all I got.
Well, and to Mr. Fishman, um, I'm assuming there's nothing, we're officially passing to protect a certain tree, or I'm assuming it's the, uh, the good nature of our, the people who are gonna be cleaning out a ditch, uh, eventually, 'cause we're not, we're not commanding the cleaning out of a ditch here, right? We're just redetermining benefit. But, um, other than the public record, uh, we're gonna count on, uh, on contractors that doing the work to clean out a ditch are gonna be polite. How do we do that? Mr. Attorney?
Well, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, I mean, it really is just coordinating probably through the county and whoever's gonna be contracting to advise them about the concerns that have been brought by the public.
So who's your county commissioner? Is that Commissioner Lynch or Fahey?
I gave her my card.
Okay, so he'll be, he'll be out there, uh, I can see that. But, yeah, I don't think there's gonna be anything, uh, in our resolution to, to, to deal with that, so it is gonna take some,
Coordination.
Coordination to, uh, to make sure that that doesn't happen, so. And if you need another county commissioner, Lynch, uh, would be your next bet, uh, two of them.
Do you have a good spot in Eagle Lake to fish?
So does Fahey.
They're very close to Hides Lake.
Where are they always biting?
Lake Costco.
Lake Costco. Lake Costco.
By the lip.
They're ready to go. Okay. And you don't have any, a comment, sir? Okay.
No.
You something else?
Yep.
Okay, something else.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the attached findings and orders adopting the redetermination of benefits for county ditches six, nine, and ten.
Well said.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Fahey and a second by Commissioner Anderson for, uh, exactly what Commissioner Fahey stated. Any discussion, further discussion on that?
Just one question, I know that last time we were, um, together, there was a, um, a question of the costs associated. I'm guessing that that was shared and remedied and figured out by now, right?
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Woodman, uh, that is not the case. I'm still working on that, uh, that's actually next week's, next week's project.
Okay, but it's in process, we know about it, we're getting them.
Yeah, and, um, just to clarify, so the next, the next step in the process, now that the redetermination of benefits has been approved for these, um, uh, county ditches, we have a couple more joint ditches coming, uh, then the last step will be to, uh, accumulate all the costs for, uh, the viewers, for the attorneys, for the engineering firms. Um, and then we will come back to the ditch authority and the joint ditch authority, and I'll present all those costs that have been incurred over the last two, three years doing that, and then we'll use this new redetermination of benefits to spread those costs. Um, and then any, um, and then we'll, uh, start talking about any projects that need to be done, if there's any cleaning to be done, any clean outs, and then we'll use this new redetermination of benefits to, um, separate out or allocate those costs out as well. But that'd be a, a subsequent, um, meeting where we're gonna have the costs associated with the redetermination of benefits.
Thank you.
Mr. Fishman, where, where would this fit in your autobiography of this ditch business? First chapter?
I, I, uh, Mr. Chair, I, um, I kinda anticipated it being a kind of an appendix, you know, just a little thing, but it's kinda growing, it's, uh, and I'm hearing about, you know, uh, oaks and, and learning about things, and.
I still wanna see that, I'm gonna have to find out.
It brought me to this meeting today where we had a lot of discussion about water, and I learned a lot about from the previous, um, presentations, yeah, so very, very interesting stuff.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this, uh, on this, this, this ends our, our role at this point, correct?
Uh, except for, um, coming back for, in a future meeting for, um, allocating the costs associated with this, but we've now done with the redetermination of benefits for county ditch six, nine, and ten. County ditch, uh, two-dash-three will be coming back May twentieth, because the, if you recall, the ditch authority, um, uh, directed the viewers to, to, uh, take a few of the comments and, and look, and reconsider, uh, with any, uh, impacts on the affected landowners. So that one's still coming. We are looking at, uh, March eleventh potentially as a joint ditch meeting, um, and, and bringing back those costs for the redetermination and allocating the cost. And for the larger assessments, uh, the ditch authority would have the option to spread that out over multiple years assessment, so it's not all in one, uh, then there's usually an interest, uh, associated with that, so, um, uh, you know, still some work to be done, but we're.
We're far from done.
Yeah, we're, well, we're, we, the redetermination is the big, that's obviously, that's the big, it's been a big project up to this point. And then, uh, we have some housekeeping and, and, um, you know, allocating costs on that, but it should get a little bit easier from here on out.
All right, thank you for all your hard work, David.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, and great to see you guys.
Mr. Chair.
I tried to make a constituent out of him, I didn't recognize him with his hat. Commissioner Lynch.
I'll make the motion to adjourn as the county ditch authority and reconvene as the county board.
Second.
I have a motion by Lynch and a second by Uterman to adjourn as the county ditch authority and reconvene as the county board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. County Administrator report.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Board Members, uh, I think this was mentioned earlier, but tomorrow night, there is a forty-one-ten open house, that is a big project.
Yes.
We've heard from, uh, a few folks in the community that there is concern about traffic on that one, it's maybe five and eighty-second. So, uh, what we're working with, uh, our public work staff is working on game plans to try and mitigate it, but it will be painful, like all the construction projects. But you're welcome to attend that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I am.
Okay, thank you, uh, da-da-da-da, we are now going to go into a closed session. Uh, what do I need to read, Mr. County Attorney?
Need to read the page one-eighteen, uh, action requested, motion to enter, if you could just read them verbatim, which is listed there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we are going, it's a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, motion to enter into closed session.
Oh, mo- there you go, okay, motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section thirteen D dot zero-five, subdivision three B and three C, to discuss attorney-client privileged confidential settlement negotiations related to property ID number, numbers, oh-four dot zero-zero-eight-zero-two-one-zero and oh-four dot zero-zero-nine-zero-nine-zero-zero.
Second.
Okay, I guess Workman made that motion.
Yes, he did.
He wasn't just reading, uh, for his health, uh, and seconded by Commissioner Lynch, any discussion on this?
Only that you said oh-four, and then you said zero-zero-zero, that would be a zero-four.
Which none would get me for that? Yes. My apologies, I corrected, I see, I corrected, so. No discussion on this motion to go into closed session, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right.
Can we get a five-minute?
We're gonna get a five, just a four-minute break.